So, good evening ladies and gentlemen, I am here with a quick interview with uh, present county commissioner and also two thousand twenty-three mayoral candidate uh, for Goldsboro, North Carolina, Mr. Bevin Foster, how you doing today?
Great sir, how about you?
I'm doing wonderful, I'm doing wonderful, we're gonna get right into it, if anybody knows Mr. Foster, uh, he's been in politics for about what, eight years now?
Eight years, yeah.
Okay, you started on the Goldsboro City Council?
Yes, sir.
And what year was that?
Twenty fifteen.
Twenty fifteen, and uh, you served what, how many years there?
Four years there.
Four years, okay, and so that was two thousand nineteen when uh, your term was up? And at that point, uh, you ran for mayor, correct? And uh, according to this article, what, you only lost by about what, three hundred votes?
I, I don't remember how many it was, but it was a few hundred votes.
Okay, okay, and um, so after that race, uh, you went on to run for county commission?
Correct.
District three?
Yes, sir.
Alright, and you won that seat?
Yes, sir.
Alright, so since two thou- was that two thousand nineteen as well?
That was two thousand twenty.
Two thousand twenty, so from two thousand twenty to presently, uh, you are currently uh, the county commissioner?
Yes, sir, district three.
Alright, okay, so, um, during your time, uh, from that eight years, uh, what have you learned and um, pretty much how have you grown? Uh, from that time, what have you learned about city government, politics, um, allowing your passion uh, to kind of fit the political spectrum?
Um, learned a lot, um, you know, at the beginning of my political career, you know, it was, it was a lot of passion that seemed like it was hatred at times, maybe it seemed like it was personal, but it was, it was about city business, you know, and, and, and the issues at hand, and not to say, I honestly would I take it, I wouldn't take any of it back, but knowing what I know now, I would still, I would probably move a little bit different with handling certain situations, and not get upset about who understands my message and who doesn't. You know what I'm saying, like a lot of times it would get me upset because I, you know, you present facts and you present documents stating that, hey, this is wrong and illegal, and you get voted against, you know what I mean, it, it's harsh sometimes, but and, and learning to just control that and say, you know what, that's the way y'all voted. It'd come down how it come down, and even now, if you see a lot of things going on with the city as far as their budget, as far as not being able to borrow money, as far as not having a bond, a lot of those issues, issues that I started, you know, on my, beginning of my political career, that came about, you know, later on, but it was started in my era, you know what I mean, and, 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 so I'm proud of that, you know what I mean, but you know, at the same time, you know, just learning how to move a lot different, you know, as we grow, we're supposed to mature, we're supposed to, you know, learn some new things, you know what I'm saying, and over time, I just have, you know what I'm saying, uh, my message is still the same, I still have the same passion and love for the community, but I deliver it a little bit different now and move a little bit different to try to accomplish the mission for, 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 for the city of Goldsboro, for Wayne County also, because even my current district now, I think it's maybe ninety percent of the city. My district covers ninety percent of the, ninety, ninety percent of my district is in the city. I probably cover about thirty, forty percent of the city with my district, yeah.
Alright, and so, um, going back, um, to the beginning of this years, I guess, primary, uh, actually, I remember, uh, you, a couple of weeks ago, you, you, you kind of formally announced that you were running for mayor, even though you had put your, I guess, ballot in, bid in, I don't, I don't know what to call it. Yeah, you signed up, you know, way before that, but as I was uh, at the meeting greet that night interviewing various candidates, um, you know, a lot of, I would, a lot of them said, you know, well, Bevin, he signed up, but he's not gonna run. Uh, what changed your mind, uh, from, you know, that time you signed up and, you know, where everybody's already started campaigning and making their uh, pledges and their political stances? Uh, you were silent and I guess with the attention of not even campaigning or running, uh, what changed your mind to, you know, kind of come to the forefront, um, with your candidacy?
Well, at the time, um, when I first registered, you know, it was, it was a, it was a thing of, I felt like it was needed, because the people that had signed up, I felt like they weren't going to really do what was needed in the city, and from that day until I kind of sort of announced, it's just been a lot of things going on personally, that, that kind of sort of was like, okay, maybe this is not meant to be, you know what I mean? You know, sometimes, you know, you know, whether you believe in God, Buddha, Allah, whoever, you know, sometimes, the universe, you feel like everything, like maybe, okay, it's, it's not, it's not for me right now, and I'm just, you know, gonna stop and be patient and everything. And uh, so finally, it was just like, after the storm I went through, it was like, hey, it's a rainbow on the other side, you know what I'm saying, it was like, yo, like, yo, you, a few people had reached out to me, and then it was just like, someone was just like, yo, you have to do it, you know what I mean, because it's part of your purpose, win, lose, or draw, you know what I'm saying, so, that's why I said, you know, well, let me, I signed up, at least let me put the information out there, you know, hit some doors, do what I do, you know what I mean, and let, let it fall how it falls.
Mm-hmm, and um, being that you said that, like, uh, you, you mentioned people, you know, signing up, wanting the position, uh, you mentioned in this article, uh, written by the old U-North, if you guys haven't gotten this paper, uh, shout out to Ken Fine as well, did a wonderful article on all of the candidates, I've just read the one on, uh, Mr. Foster, uh, but you mentioned something about, you know, people, you know, really wanting the position, now I know, I, I, I don't know from experience, but I know from talking to you and, you know, Councilman Polack and a couple of other individuals, how hard it is to be in that position, and how much stress, and how many people are, you know, uh, pulling at you and tagging at you, and you know, you're, you're wanting to fight for what's right, but yet still, you know, trying to make everybody happy. Um, how difficult is that, you know?
It, it, it's, it's difficult, it's, it all depends on how you move as a, as a, as a so-called politician. I don't like being called a politician, but I guess that's what I am by definition. But, um, you know, everybody moves a little bit different, I, I, I stay in touch with the people a lot, you know what I mean, I get calls from, from, from all sorts of things, you know, and so sometimes it's hectic, you know what I mean, from, you know, people call you thinking that you have something to do with housing, you know, and it's like, housing authority is a completely different entity, the city has no power over them, you know what I mean? But understanding certain stuff like that, and then they think that you're not fighting for them, and it's like, I am, but it's only so much that I can do, you know what I mean, from that end, or school systems, you know, I, I get probably forty percent of my phone calls about school issues.
Well, the school board is under the county commission, right?
Okay, but just their budget.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying, so we give them the money to fund everything that they have to fund, but after that, we have no say-so in what actually goes on in the schools.
You don't have any, uh, I guess, responsibility, they don't, they don't have any responsibility to the county commission to uh, report to what they do with the, the funding?
Yes, that's about it, and that's kind of sort of slim too, you know what I mean, because it, it's really, it's just really like kind of sort of oversight of just the, just the budget saying, okay, this is, this is your budget for the year, here you go. And after that, it's not, it's because they, they are their own board, you know what I mean, they have the power over all of that, they contain all of that, and a lot of people don't understand that, even when I was on the city council, the same thing, you know, I got a lot of school issues, and for the most part, I've been able to handle most of them, some of them, you know, are just out of my reach, you know, but I still, you know, I try to email, I need to get email, talk to, I need to talk to, things like that. But, um, overall, I think most people, it just, it just all depends on how you're moving in politics. Some people don't move that way, you know, most, most politicians, you can't pick up the phone and call them, you know what I mean, or they won't answer, or stuff like that. I try to be the one that, that if you call me, hey, what you need, you know what I'm saying, or you email me, and let me try to get to it. So I'm a little more accessible to the people, and it's a little more demanding, because sometimes people don't understand, you're one person, but there's a hundred and twenty thousand people in the county that may be calling me too, you know what I mean, not even on top of my mama, so, you know, it's like, you know, people don't, you know, think about your responsibilities as a father, you know, as, as a son, as a, as an aunt, I, I mean, as an uncle, you know, you know, all of those titles, you know what I'm saying, it's, it's a lot to it, so, you know, and then to still try to juggle the politics, work, business, you know, uh,
Everything.
Everything, you know what I mean, like, I, I, I wear a few different hats, you know what I'm saying, and it's, it's not, you know, people don't understand that sometimes, but you just try to do your best, you know what I mean?
And, and, and you mentioned, you know, not being a prototypical politician, I don't consider you as a politician, I consider you as a servant of the people, like even right now, where we at today, you know, you facilitate a mental health class each and every day, uh, for, you know, a, a several group of people, uh, whom probably a lot of people wouldn't want to come in here day to day to do this. So, how was your connection with the people, you know, so, the, the, some wouldn't consider, you know, the disadvantage, or, you know, the uh, the disavowed, the, 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 the castaways, as well as your, uh, connections with, you know, the higher-ups, the business people, uh, different, all facets of the community, how, how was that gonna help you, um, I guess, maintain a sense of balance when it comes to making decisions that are, uh, beneficial for everybody?
And that's the thing, and I think that's where a lot of politicians, community servants, community activists, whatever you wanna call them, don't have that same frame, you know, it's either most deal with the, the upper, or, and most forget about the lower, you know what I'm saying, because it's like the upper that everybody's trying to impress, and, and to meet, and to shake hands with, and to everything else, but for me, it's like, you know, I can do both, you know what I mean, like, I feel like I can walk into the room right now, the president, and hold any conversation, I feel like I could walk on the street and talk to someone homeless and hold the same conversation, either way, I can reach both of them on whatever level they wanna reach, and I think that's the, that's one of my best things, that one of my best assets, that, you know, very few politicians or whatever have, you know what I mean, so, for me, you know, I, I try to use it to my advantage a lot of times with, you know, opening doors for others, because sometimes, you know, you can make that phone call, because you are county commissioner, you are a city councilman, or you are, you know, you have that title to help someone that's in need, that they couldn't, they couldn't make on their own, you know what I'm saying, and sometimes people don't give them the same respect that they might give you, or that door doesn't open for them, because, you know, they don't have the connection to open it, or that person just won't open it for them, but when you make that phone call, well, they know Bevin, let me, and they don't even know, I don't know him. I don't know him, you know what I mean, like, it's just the fact that they call me in need, or it's just something going on that I can help with, I just try to help, it's, it's not even about knowing them or not knowing, it's just, it's just doing, and a lot of stuff, it's, it's crazy, because I could just be, I've been walking down the street sometimes, I do a lot of walking, people like, hey man, I just want to tell you, thank you, like, what?
What I do?
I don't even know what I did, you know, I'd be like, alright, thank you, and I act like I know exactly what I'm talking about, but it's like, yeah, I don't, I don't remember, and I'm not taking notes of it, it's just, I'm just doing what I can for, for, for everyone that I can do it for, you know what I mean, and, and it's really wanting to see this city change, see the city grow, see some good things happen for everyone, you know what I mean, because, you know, it, it's, it's, it's gonna take all of us, you know what I'm saying, I mean, it's gonna take that upper class, it's gonna take the lower class as well, to, to bring things together. I mean, I was talking about the school districts, you know, it's, it's, it's easy to have an A school over here, and an F school over here, and you bring it to a C, you know what I mean, but my thing, if you got this A, don't keep focusing everything on that A, keep focusing every, focus on that F, and get that F up to a C, now you gotta B.
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't make sense to me, you know what I'm saying, but sometimes some people don't understand that, it's like, keep feeding up here, keep feeding up here, and let them down there keep going, down, 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 and we see that sometimes.
Yeah, it's not, a lot of times, like, and that's not just here, that's a lot of places.
Everywhere, you know, and, and that's, like you just said, like, people think, oh man, problems in Goldsboro, man, listen, I don't know if you travel or not, but these problems are everywhere, you know what I mean, it's not just here, you know what I mean, so, yeah.
So, um, being from here, because I've, I've had the pleasure, and uh, you know, the honor of interviewing a few of the mayoral candidates, uh, and also a few of the uh, city council candidates as well, and many of them are not originally from the area. Now, um, what advantage do you think that you have from being here? Or even maybe what advantage do they may, they may have from not being here, and, you know, wanting to get into the, the political role of addressing problems of this city, um, as opposed to being here the whole while and knowing those problems?
Yeah, it can, it's, it's, it can be an advantage, it can be a disadvantage, because, you know, it, it's sometimes being from somewhere, some of the people that you know forever don't wanna see you accomplish certain things.
Okay.
And that's a harsh truth that most people don't understand, I, you know, I deal with it daily, you know what I mean, and it's, it's harsh, because it's like, hey man, we grew up together, you know what I mean, what, what you mad at me for, you know what I mean, the white, why won't you support me? You know, I just had a student the other day, he said he was telling someone about me running for mayor, and he was like, man, I don't care, you know, he was like, that's Bevin though, he was, he was like, man, you gotta understand, everybody, the love that you have for me, and how you feel, everybody didn't feel that way, even though they knew me, they may know my family, they might have watched me grow up, but some people just don't wanna see someone that they know doing certain things, you know what I'm saying, so, that's the hard aspect of it, um, the advantage, I would say, is just knowing more about what's needed here, you know what I mean, because you, you can connect with a little bit of everybody, so I can hear a little bit of everything, of like, you know, what's going on, what's needed, where the problem areas are, all of those things, where most people don't hear that, most people don't get them phone calls about what's, what's really happening, what's needed, you know what I mean, because they're so far out of touch, you know what I mean, and then if you're not from here, you don't know the people, so, they're not gonna call you, because they don't trust you, they don't know you like that, they don't feel comfortable communicating with you. But on the hand with me, I think I, I, I fit all those boxes, and they, you know, certain things I hear that most politicians probably wouldn't hear, or conversations and things like that, that most politicians don't get those phone calls and say, hey, this is what's going on, and, you know, this is what we might be able to do about it, and, you know, and then I think even being away from here sometimes, not being from here, can be an advantage, because you've seen things happening in other places that you can bring here, you know, and I think that's my biggest thing, I travel a lot, and it's so many things that I've seen in other places that, that, that could be here in Goldsboro, you know what I mean, and I, I've recently, you know, was in, in, well, it's been a while now, I've been, been down there, well, been there, but not down there like I used to, um, in Georgia, and it's a city about the same size as Goldsboro, with an air force base, and I'm watching how this city is thriving, how it's thriving, and I'm just like, why isn't Goldsboro thriving that way, you know what I'm saying, but I'm like, it's a model there that we could use here, you know what I mean, and whatnot. I feel easily to make things move a little bit faster, bring in companies, bring in businesses, you know, it's like, you know, a lot of people, you know, we talk about bringing in a, a billion dollar company, which, you know, that was questionable, you know, from day one, for me, you know, and I've still been had a question about it, because that's never been done in the history of Goldsboro, but what about bringing in a Red Lobster, because there's, there's a mother out here that wants to be a waitress, you know what I'm saying, that needs that tip money, that from, from a business like that, that's also beneficial, but who's working on it? You know what I mean, who's working on a Home Depot, who's working on different things like that, because we have retired people that, that, that wanna go work at somewhere like that, and it's just lows, you know what I mean, so, it's so much more to business and stuff coming here than just a company, you know what I mean, and, and that task bracket, you have a whole, a lot of other task brackets that bring, this is, that can bring business here too, that people need to work at, because everybody's not gonna be able to go work at that company, but like I said, I'm gonna work at Home Depot, I'm gonna work at Red Lobster, I could work at the Cracker Barrel, and some of those folks, you know, make good money, you know what I'm saying, or, or money on the side, if it ain't nothing but, you know, tips or whatever, you know what I mean, I try to tip good, so I know, you know what I mean, like, you know, if you, if you doing, if you, if you doing that ten times a day, you know what I mean, you done made, you know, a little bit of change, plus a check, you know what I mean, so, it's like, it's, it's so, it's so many different things, and, 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 you know, that, that can be brought to Goldsboro, that, that, that's a need that people don't see, in my opinion.
Alright, and we're, we're gonna get to the, a couple of issues, but I do have one question, you kind of touched on it earlier, and then you even touched on it a while ago, when you said, you know, a lot of people, um, may not wanna succeed, succeed, or may not wanna see you accomplish things, or like you said, like, they're, they're a little too familiar with you, and don't recognize your growth, as, as, as you mentioned in this article, and as I, you know, wanted to ask you as well, in the beginning of your political career, you know, you were a little bit more aggressive in addressing the issues, and, and I say aggressive, but it was passionate, you know, I, you, you were a little bit straightforward, it was like, you know, you, you're like me, like, there's no gray and white area, if it's the truth, you know, I want every, like, how can every, how can everyone not see what's going on, and when nobody sees, you know, you wanna scream, you wanna pull your hair out, you wanna make it, make it known, but now, like you said, you, you've grown, and um, what, what do you say to people who still hold that image of you, or that version of you, to, you know, to, to heart, and, and may not have gotten over some of the harsh truths, or some of the harsh criticisms that may have been well deserved, but, you know, I, I hate that saying, it's not what you say, it's how you say it, no, it's what you say, but, you know, in my opinion, still, but what about those people who may have, you know, been, um, unruffed, li- li- little ruffled, you know, by your, your, by your previous approach, uh, to addressing issues?
Hmm, that's a, that's a good question, um, I, I would just say to them, I mean, you know, you can, if you, if, if someone did something, you know, years ago or something, and, you know, you, 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 you don't, you haven't paid attention to the person they are now, that's, that's kind of sort of, you know, there's, there's a lot of things going on there, and it's like, you know, we've all grown, we've all changed, you know what I'm saying, no matter what, even whether, whether, whether what, no matter what it's been, you know what I mean, and, and if you aren't given, willing to give a person a second chance, or whatever it may be, or to look at them different for who they are now, then sometimes it's not a problem with the person, it's a problem with them, you know what I mean? And sometimes I gotta look inside to figure out, like, okay, why am I still mad at this guy? Why am I holding this against this guy, and then it's like, I, I, you know, even Kenny Fine kind of sort of asked me that question too, and I said, you know, at the end of the day, oh, he might not have put it in there, but he asked. But, um, I just, I just hold on to the truth, you know what I mean, like, is it the truth? You know, if, if, if I stated something that was a lie, or, or if I did something that was really, really wrong, or something like that, you know, I understand it, but what, when I stated certain things, was it the truth? Don't be upset with me, but by the way it was delivered years ago, you know what I'm saying, but look at it for what it was, was it the truth? You know what I mean, and, and that's what the thing that I think that, that for me, kind of sort of upset me a lot back then, was that, it's like, hey, I'm speaking truth, y'all getting mad at me, you know what I'm saying, and y'all calling me these names, and this, that, the third, and it's like, yo, like,
Anti-crime.
Yeah, you know, and everything else, and it's like, okay, and then, you know, over the years, I'm, I've had people reach out to me, and, yo, Bev, yo, what you, you was, you was spitting some, you was spitting some stuff, like, yo, I, I can, I can, I understand it now, I see it now, you know what I mean, and it's like, I understand that, I think people weren't ready for that then, you know what I'm saying, and I, and I came a little too harsh, a little too advanced, you know what I'm saying, and sometimes you have to feed people slowly, you know what I'm saying, because you, you, you put too much on a person, I don't even want too much on me at times, you know what I'm saying, and it's like, even as I began to learn a lot of different things, it was like, oh, hold up now, you know what I'm saying, because, you know, even, it might have been the truth, but it was like, I just wasn't ready for it, you know what I'm saying, so I think my approach then, and I think, you know, people weren't ready for it, but then I also think that I, I, I could have, I, I know I could have handled it differently, and I should have, you know what I'm saying, and, and I have to be accountable for my behavior too, because a lot of things that I did, you know, I shouldn't, I shouldn't have done, you know what I'm saying, and, you know, in ways that I reacted and everything else, and I'm accountable for that, and I learned, and that's why I changed and started to move different, um, you know, a lot of people like, well, I think y'all pretty much getting along on the county commissioner, we get along no different than, I feel like we got along at the city council, it's just the fact that I approach it differently, you know what I'm saying, it's like, I, I, my truth comes out, you know what I'm saying, and they don't like it, but it's like, Bevin, we respect you at the end of the day, you know, it's a different level of respect, and then it's not that thing of, you know, someone calling you divisive, 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 you know, or basically calling you a racist, or any of that with the county, it's just like, okay, we hear you, you know what I'm saying, but we gonna vote against you, because we can, you know what I mean? But, but we hear you, you know what I mean, and it's, you know, and, and since I've been there, I got a lot of phone calls, I got a lot of emails, I got a lot of texts from a lot of people around the county saying, hey man, we, we appreciate you, people that I would have never thought that I'd have got them from, you know, and it's like, yo, you really are doing a great job, you know what I mean, and it makes a difference to make you wanna keep going, you know what I mean, it's like, you know, you could say that, that, the day I heard that, my student said that to me, I was walking, I took a little walk, walked down the street, and uh, God stopped me, man, I saw your meeting, boy, you, you was spot on, you know, so it's like, you, you gotta be able to take both, you know what I'm saying, yeah, but overall, I, I would count, I'm gonna have to be accountable for my behavior, and at, at times, it's a lot of those meetings, I could have behaved different and everything else, and, you know, and it's so funny, because, you know, um, my man Eric Mays out of, uh, I don't know if you've seen any of his stuff, you know, talking about.
Oh, I heard about.
Yeah, 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 like, you know, it's, it's so crazy, because so many people see his videos, they love what he's doing, and it's like, I didn't do it even close to that extent, you know what I'm saying, but y'all hated when I was doing it, now you love it that it's someone else, it's just funny.
Once again, it might be that time, like you said, it's that time of, you know, we, okay, we, especially around here, with, with all the things that are going on, you know, with the law enforcement agencies, with the courts, with the finances, and everything, people are saying, okay, like, like, like even the quote you said, uh, I, and I think also the community understands a little bit different now, I think we've all grown, but, you know, community has started to see some of those things that you complained about, or you brought to the forefront, being, uh, exposed. So that's, that, that's a testament to, you know, once again, that, that advancement, or that, that, that precursor, you know, that, that coming before, that, 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 you know, that, that, that coming before time, that, that those things were, uh, evident, but, and, and just to harp on that a little bit, because I, I, I've, 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 I've been there from two thousand fifteen to now, and I be thinking the same, that was like, well, Bev, Bevin don't say nothing no more, you know, he used to come home, like, everything, but, I said, I, I said, he done got me and got soft.
You know, a lot of people don't, a lot of people don't watch those meetings, you know what I'm saying, because they, they, because of the time and everything else, but.
They come on in the morning, right?
Yeah, yeah, but those that do know, man, I go at it, I go at it, you know what I'm saying, and I stand my ground, but it's just like, at the same time, it's like, I tell people, I mean, if you, if you go through it, like, I mean, if it's right, I'm gonna vote for it, you know what I mean, I don't have a problem with that, I don't care who it is, whatever, but if it's, if it's right, well, I'm, I'm gonna vote for it, but if it benefits everyone, you know what I'm saying, but if it's, it's just a select group, and then you're hurting another group, I have a problem with that, but it's that, you know, at the end of the day, if it's something, I'm gonna speak on it, I'm gonna speak on it, I don't put as much on social media about, about what's going on in politics anymore, because it's just like, you know, I, I found myself getting burnt out on that, because it was like, I put it out there, and people didn't seem to care, or didn't seem to get, wanna get involved, so it was just like, hey, you know what I mean, I'm, I'm just gonna tell y'all some jokes.
Yeah, and I actually understood that too, because once you start putting it out there, you might, you know, get in those debates, people misconstrue your words, you start talking, and now, the, the post that you made, you're discussing a whole entire post, and next thing you know, it's seven hours later, and you haven't gotten any day done during the day, so, I, 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 I understand why you don't do it.
I learned the hard way, I learned the hard way, you know what I mean, but I, I still have that same passion and drive for, 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 for the community, you know what I mean, it's just like I said, I just move a little bit different, and, and everything, you know.
So, what are some of the, the, the major issues, you know, that, that you would tackle first, or that you would be more concerned about? Um, you know, if, if, if elected to, you know, the current mayoral position, uh, what are some of the issues?
First and foremost, you, you have to focus on getting the finances straight, you know what I mean, I, I think, you know, because you want your city to operate financially properly, you know what I'm saying, and, and, and that would be the first thing, it's just a complete overhaul of the finances, to see where the money is, what's going on, how can we fix this, you know what I mean, and, and then after that, to look per department, and see what's going on in each department, like, okay, this is too much spending here, how can we cut this? To still get the same, same service, but to not waste all this money that we're wasting, you know what I mean, and certain things like that, um, would be the first thing, would be the finances, then you, you have to, you have to address your, your, your lack of employees with the, with the police, you know what I mean, and because, to me, I, I don't, I haven't, I don't know all of the challenges going on in the police department right now, but I do know that that's one, you know what I mean?
I hear it's the pay.
Yeah, you know.
A lot of, a lot of police left because of, you know, they can find higher pay.
And that's the thing, you know, you, you have to be competitive, I, I, I say that at the county all the time, you know what I mean, I, I fought hard for pay raises at the county, you know what I mean, and we've done some, you know what I mean, we probably still got a ways to go, but I fought hard for it, you know what I mean, that was one of the things that I could say, I fought for it, the county, and it pretty much, you know, I won that battle, you know what I mean, so, so, it, it, it is, you know, I mean, you, you wanna be competitive, because if I can drive twenty minutes down the road and make an extra fifteen thousand dollars a year.
That's a no-brainer.
It's a no-brainer, you know what I mean, and then sooner or later, it's like, hey, I'm just gonna go ahead and move there, so now we're losing a resident, you know what I'm saying? Whether it be Johnson County, or, or, or Wilson County, or, you know what I mean, you know, both, both paying, paying high, I don't, I don't know if Lenora does, but I know Johnson and Wilson pays higher, so, that's, that's a little quick little highway drive, you know what I mean, you know what I mean, and depending on if you a sheriff, you going to the sheriff department, once you cross that county line, you good, you at work. Once you cross that county line, you good, you at work, you know what I mean, so you know, if you going to the city, you would have to drive a little bit further, but you know, so people, it's a different lot, a couple of different things to it. Same thing with Wilson, so I think that you you have to be competitive, you have to be competitive, and you have to figure out a way to do it, you have to, and you're not gonna match a Raleigh or. Charlotte, but you have to, and it's hard to even match Johnson County, because people don't understand Johnson County, Johnson County population is twice the of Goldsboro.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, yeah, they've they've grown.
County though.
Yeah, yeah, Johnson County, not that, Smithfield, not Smithfield, but Johnson County.
County is twice the population of Goldsboro.
Twice the population.
Population of Goldsboro is what, forty, fifty?
Well, no, no, I'm saying, the the well, let me say this, the population of Wayne County, period, their county is 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 almost twice the population, I think they have over two hundred thousand.
And we have about a hundred thousand.
Yeah, a hundred and twenty thousand, so you gotta figure, that's a whole different tax bracket, you know what I mean, that's coming into their revenue that's coming in, you know, and then also to the city, because. You know, if you're in the county, you're doing certain things in the city too as well, you know, so if your county is growing, your city nine times out of ten is growing. You know, and with with houses and everything else, because it's cheaper to live in. Johnson County than Wake County and drive over every day to work, cause a lot of people do that too, you know what I'm saying, so, but they bring that. That revenue back to Johnson County as far as buying houses and all all the or renting or whatever it may be, cause Wake County, yeah, Wake County can be expensive and. Shopping, restaurants, everything else, you see, you drive over there, a few, a lot of restaurants pop up over there, you know what I mean, so, yeah.
Yeah, they got the pottery as well.
Yes, yes, but that would be one of, that that would be the first step with with me would be the finances, and I think everything else triples down from there, you know what I mean, because. You know, whether different departments are underpaid, you have to get get that caught up, you know what I mean, you have to get to a standard that's like, okay. You can go out and recruit, then you have to figure out recruiting, all these things and little things that maybe you can put in to to help people wanna work for G P D, you know what I'm saying? Whether it's, you know, paying for the schooling or whatever it may be to, you know, for for people to wanna go to class, it's it's a lot, you know what I mean, I the schooling, from what I heard is. It's pretty intensive, and you have to, you giving up a lot of your time, you know what I mean, and and at the end of it, you know, to to get a job, but what are you doing in between that time? You know what I mean, so maybe some program or something we can do to, you know. Get people over that hump during that time while they're in school that no one else is doing, you know what I'm saying, and they, okay, well, yeah, let's go work with G P D, you know what I mean, and then once we get them. Try to keep them there, because the thing is, we, you know, a lot of times you get them, but then as soon as they get their first opportunity, they get their year of experience. They they shooting out the door, whether it's to the sheriff's office, or, yeah, or to or to a a different county or city.
You, um, so with with those issues, and I know there are a lot of issues, but being that you've been on the city council before. How does those, how do those issues come about, like, you know, like, if you want to address that, being a mayor, do you have to? Put in a a memorandum, or you know, does the city council have to bring it to you first, how do those, you know, particular issues that y'all wanna act upon? Come up before you?
And that's the thing a lot of people don't understand, you think, oh, oh, the mayor, I mean, the mayor is just another city councilman almost, you know, he has one vote. And and that's it, and it's just a figurehead that that controls the meetings, but you have to have a board that's willing to do the same thing with you, and that's in agreement, at least four people. To get most things accomplished, you know what I'm saying, so it's like, I could say, well, I wanna come in and 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 do the finances. But if I have a board that says, no, that's not what we wanna do, then it's gonna be a a battle of me trying to get it done, you know what I'm saying, and 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 I would try to, you know. Build a case to why we would need to get it done, and what's so important about it, but if you don't have four members that's willing to vote with you, you know what I mean, because it's gonna cost. You know, it's gonna cost money to go in and figure out everything that's going on and try to get the city back to where it needs to be, you know, you have to get a bond, you have to have a bond rate. And all of these things to get that, get those departments straight, it's gonna cost.
And I I think you mentioned, maybe not in this article, but uh I think you you mentioned getting uh. On on your time of council, you were trying to get a forensic audit.
Yes.
Uh back then, and it was voted voted against, correct, what is a forensic audit?
It's it's a it's a deep, deep, detailed audit, like you go, they're going in to find everything they could possibly find, whether good or bad. You know what I'm saying, and you know, and and for me, I I it's. From being on the city council all those years, I know that there's a lot of things in the finance department that hasn't come up. That should, you know what I mean, and and doing that forensic audit lays everything out on the table, and then you you can see. Where every dollar is and what's going on, so now then you can start making better decisions from that point on, you know, and. But, you know, very few people are wanna gonna wanna do that, because some skeletons that were buried might come up, you know what I mean, and 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 it's 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 the issue. And I understand it, but at the end of the day, we have to do what's best for the people here, and you know, and what's best for the city, and I think that that's what's best, you know. Regardless, you know, I you know, he, um and Kenny Fine, if you ask me, you know, how did I feel about the county manager, and uh. Do I think he's doing a good, you know, what should he be doing different with the finances, and I'm just like, you know. Personally, I didn't vote for him, I I don't like him as a city manager, you know what I mean, I didn't think he had any experience, I didn't think he was gonna be a good leader, but. For me, it's the city council's responsibility to make sure those finances straight, regardless of whatever that county as city manager is doing. His job is to manage the departments, the city council's job is to manage this. Everything, him and the cities, you know what I mean, the budget, everything, you know what I mean, and he has city manager's responsibility too, but it's like. As a council, why haven't y'all put things in place to go after those finances and make sure everything is straight? You know what I mean, I'm not even just gonna question the city manager, I'm more than questioning the city council also, I I haven't seen any policies they put in place, I haven't seen a forensic audit. I haven't seen any of those things, and it's like, why?
And I think I met, his name was Tim, right, is it Tim?
Yes.
Yeah, so I met him at one event, uh I think it was a volunteer event at the firehouse, and you know, we talk, you know, I I introduced myself, hey, to the manager, I just started asking him questions, like. Wait, where you from, you know, I'm military, you know, and he came, you know, and that's that's once again, uh. Uh I wouldn't say an issue of mine, but I'm like, okay, you're just coming here for a job, not because you are invested. I I guess in the city, and you know, maybe he is, but you know, I just see people, where are you from, are you not from here, you specifically came here to be the city manager? You know, that's, to me, it's just like, okay, you come here for a job, you know, you're not interested in, I mean, maybe he is, once again, I I I I don't wanna put words in his mouth. But you know, if I'm going somewhere for a job, I'm going to get paid, it's not because, you know, I I wanna do my job good, but hey, if another job calls me, you know, forget this. I think, I I don't know how many city managers we've had, but I I can, you know, since two thousand twelve, since I've been involved, I know, I remember Mark Stevens, I think that was his name.
Well, no, Mark Stevens was the was the was the city councilman, it's been three.
But he wasn't the city guy. It was Mark though, right, because I remember.
Oh, man, I couldn't even remember the old city manager's name, but it wasn't Mark Stevens though, but I know what you're talking about.
But yeah, well, both of them, I mean, I guess, I ain't gonna say.
Where was it, God, I mean, if you wouldn't ask me his name, I could have said it, man.
But how many have we had within the past ten years, would you say? Or or has it just been one or two?
I think maybe one or two, now before that, it's it's been maybe three, a little outside of ten years, you know what I mean, because uh it was three. And then the one that that was doing most of my tenure, that was there, and then the one current one now, you know what I mean, and then there was one right before him. You know, the one that was there during my tenure, but yes, so.
So, but yeah, so I mean, I I I think you've you you've grown a lot, you've learned a lot, you know, just just, you know, sitting back and. I guess taking everything on, taking everything in, uh you and uh, once again, uh Councilman Williams, not Councilman. Commissioner, yeah, Commissioner Williams, I, you know, I just remember how vocal you guys were, now I don't hear too much, because I think you realize that, okay. No matter how loud you scream, or no matter, you know, how how um. You know, how how boisterous you are, you even mentioned, um and this is, you know, it's gonna take patience. You know, it's gonna take working with others, it's gonna take, you know, compromise and understanding, so um I commend you on that as well, and I see the change, I hope everybody else sees the change and. Uh I'm not gonna hold you too much longer, man, I wanted to keep it like the forty five minutes, so, um is there anything that you want the people uh to know, you know, outside of. What you've already said about your candidacy, your growth, your intentions?
Not not really, uh it's just, you know, I feel like at the end of the day, I'm I'm the best person for the job, because, you know, we we. There's gonna take some 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 changes, you know, and the next mayor, city council that goes in, if they continue to do things the same way. We're gonna get the same result, you know, uh you know, they said Einstein's definition of insanity, you know what I mean, continue to do the same thing, expecting a different result. You know what I'm saying, and you can't do that, you're gonna have to do something different to get a different outcome, to change the city, and and you know, um. Whether it's me or whoever, I hope they do that, but I just don't see certain candidates doing that, you know, I think they're, you know, a lot of people have. Backdoor and hidden agendas of why they wanna, you know, be in certain positions and and everything else, you know, whether it's to run for a future position, or because, you know. I'm I'm trying to get out of my daddy's shadow, or whatever it may be, you know what I mean, like, you know, and it's not, it's not real true intentions there, you know what I mean, but. But but for me, it's it's always been true, and and to be honest, like, I'm taking a step back and backwards in politics, you're very seldom probably meeting any of your commissioners anywhere. That would be a commissioner to go back to be, try to go back to be a mayor, you know what I mean, like, people think that. Oh, the mayor says, no, we're technically in politics, I'm taking a step backwards, but I'm willing to make that sacrifice, because I I, you know, I love this city, and you know, I love the county. You know, but I I take that sacrifice, because I know that I can do it, and then also bringing all the boards together, you know, um. School board, county, and the city, you know, and even Mount Olive and and Fremont, we need to work together, you know what I'm saying, to to in order to be able to make this. Everything better, you know what I mean, the more the county, the better the county is, the better the city should be, the better the city is, the better the county should be, you know what I mean, and it's like. We haven't been working together, it's been a lot of power struggles and everything else, and it's just like, you know, we gotta get some unity going on in order to move the place forward, and it's a lot of. Old thinking, you know what I mean, like, you know, sit on both boards, and you know, I mean, sometimes the average age is seventy years old, you know what I mean, and it's like, you know. It is, and 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 to not to speak ill of elderly or anything, but it's like, at some point, I feel like, if for me, you know.
You gotta pass the torch.
I'm I'm passing the torch, you know what I'm saying, and I've I've even tried to, you know, I've been trying to pass the torch since the day I got into politics and opened the door for others, you know what I'm saying, I think I have. You know what I mean, you know what I mean, like, at the end of the day, like, I it's been some positions open because of because of because of the work I put in. But it's like, for most, they just hold on to that, because it's a power thing for them, they've accomplished so much in life, they're well off financially, but it's like, I gotta stay here because. A power, you know what I mean, and you know, that title, you know what I mean, and it's it's sad, because you're hurting. The county, you're hurting the people, you know what I'm saying, and you're stagnating growth, because you're unwilling to change, you know what I mean, I mean, it was as simple as, you know. Every every county, most counties have their their meetings in the afternoon, I fought to get meetings in the afternoon here, it was, oh my god. You you mean to tell me, you you don't wanna do nine o'clock in the morning, no, I wanna do nine o'clock in the morning, you know what I mean, cause I gotta get up at seven. To be here for this meeting, you know what I'm saying, it's like, it's just ridiculous, you know what I mean?
At the gym at five.
I do, but that's my gym time, you know what I mean, but it's like, you know, it 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 also that time, it 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 takes away from your citizens being able to engage.
True.
You see what I'm saying?
Most people are at work.
And they engage with the city council, cause it's afternoon, you know what I mean, if you if you if you do the research, cause I've done it, all other counties. At least have at least one afternoon meeting every month, if not, both of them meetings.
So y'all meet twice a month.
Twice a month, you know, they we they they finally agreed to doing trying it for four meetings, for a year. Out of those four meetings, I think we met twice in the afternoon, one got canceled, and the other one ended up all on a so-called holiday after they scheduled it. You know what I'm saying, so it was just like, you know what I mean, it really wasn't even a good trial to even try to get people to engage with what's going on with the county, and I tell a lot of people. If some issues is going on in the city, or going on in the county, y'all just don't know about them, because you're not engaged, you know what I'm saying, and it's like. For me, like I said, I I stopped doing the the Facebook posts and saying all that, because of all the issues and stuff with it, but I do want people to know. But it's like, just get it, get engaged with it, you know what I'm saying, because it's it's a lot going on there too, as you know, recently with everything with the sheriff and the. DAs and everything else, like, that's a lot, you know, financial, I financed, our records gone, you know what I mean, you know, we've had a, you know, we we got a new. Our county manager, but I mean, he was previously assistant, but you know, all of those things kinda sorta tied in together with. You know, you you watch what's happening with the city, it can easily be happening with the county right now, but nobody's paying attention to it, you see what I'm saying, we could have be having financial issues too. And obviously, we are from what just happened, you know what I'm saying, and my thing is, you know, you you let that slide with one department, what happened, what's going on with the rest of them?
Definitely.
You know what I'm saying, and what's going on, what's really going on with our finances, if you didn't do that right, were there anything else in our finances that you didn't do right, you know what I'm saying, so. That's why, you know, I've been trying to get some people engaged, but so many people are more just focused on the city, the city, the city, but not realizing, you know, we have a big budget over there, and it's a lot of things. The county's supposed to be doing for the city.
Okay, 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 so yeah, we are engulfed in the county, so we should be just as in tune with what's going on with the county.
Yes, sir.
In the city.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
So how can people engage with you, support your campaign, you know?
I mean, simple, go to the polls and vote, like, you know what I mean, for for me, you know, if you need to reach out, I'm on social media, you know, my my my. My phone number is public, my email is public, you know, um go on the county site and find all the information you need about any of us and call or email or whatever, you know what I mean? A lot of people reach out to me through social media, but you know, the main thing right now is is just, it's just a simple thing, it'll take about ten minutes, take your I D. You know, the library is early voting right now, go over there and vote, they're there from eight to five in the morning, you can vote, you know, final day will be October tenth.
Now, October tenth, because a lot of people don't know this, and I didn't know this as well, so early voting is now, you can go register to vote. At the same, at the same library on the same day and then vote, but on October tenth, you have to vote in your district.
It's big difference, yeah, yeah.
It could be, cause a lot of people gonna be coming to the library, and also, you can't register that same date, you have to be pre-re, you have to be pre-registered, so. What district, well, the the mayor, oh, so.
It'd be all the districts.
All the districts, but you know, wh- what what are the locations for each district?
Well, see, um you have, I now, like, Rages should be one, First African, uh I think Adamsville Church. Uh Wayne Center, the Wayne Center one, not the Wayne event, not the Wayne. Uh I don't know if the Maxwell is gonna be one or not, it were before, you know, last year, I I I haven't even looked at the um. The all the sites just yet, but uh it's it's it's, I think it's around ten sites there will be, you know what I mean, you know, uh. Think it'll be one in Central Heights also, um. Uh I don't know if Bear Creek, not Bear Creek, uh is that, what's, on Slocum, all the way down on Slocum, Bear Creek would be one, I don't know, uh like I said, I haven't looked at the schedule. I need to, cause it's coming up soon, but I haven't, but it'd be about ten locations, you know, you have to find your location in your district and go there and vote.
So you have about eight, eight, when when is the last day for early voting?
Uh October seventh.
October seventh, so you have about five days to get to the library, register to vote, and if you haven't done so by then, make sure you get there and at least register, so you can vote. In your district on October tenth, but I certainly thank you for.
Thank you, thank you.
Giving me your time and and your input, and I hope this, you know, interview gave people a different insight, you know, uh. Uh of your growth, but also of your knowledge of city politics and what needs to be done in our city, so I thank you for your service, and I thank you. You know, not just for your political service, but for all you do in the community that nobody sees, you know, so I appreciate you, my brother, thanks for the help in the gym.
Yes, sir.
Peace and blessings. Definitely, thank y'all for watching.